Any other counselors on communications? And if not, we're going to move to the town manager's workshop on recycling. All right, thank you. So, town manager, Mark Els, you're on for your workshop.
Thank you. Good evening, Mark Els. Here with me tonight is Director Santos and Division of Solid Waste Supervisor PJ Kelleher. Also Assistant Town Manager Clyburn and Director Milne will sit in the wings and assist us if necessary. Thank you for this opportunity to conduct a workshop with you. We do have a specific outcome, outcomes that we are looking for direction on. And those are specifically that if after we do this workshop, the town council is interested in the recommendation that Director Santos will make at the end, I'll work with legal to bring back the ways that we might modify, you know, some of our regulations, they're actually Board of Health regulations, to be able to move in a direction that accomplishes what we're going to give you a brief history on, discuss the relevant programming relative to recycling. This is a focused workshop on our recycling program here in Barnstable, specifically at our transfer station that falls under the Department of Public Works. We're going to talk a little bit about what's happened in the marketplace relevant to municipal solid waste in general, but specifically, you know, recyclable products. And I think at the end you'll hear Director Santos share with you a couple of options that we need to consider. And I'm really looking, not for a resolve or a vote of any type, but just acknowledgement and an interest that I perceive this would be a significant endeavor. But we wouldn't be bringing it before you if we didn't think that it was necessary. I believe you are all familiar with the fact that our solid waste division is an enterprise fund. And when Director Milne and I come before you in the coming months to first in a general sense, talk about fiscal policy and then after that, talk about fiscal policy relevant to wastewater. You know, we will get into more of these details, but being an enterprise fund, I think, I believe we have nine in Barnstable. Three of them are actually identified as full cost recovery through the fees that we charge at that enterprise fund, meaning that your town manager just doesn't have the authority to assume that, for example, if we don't charge for resources in our, rather, we don't charge a fee for recycling and solid waste and the town's direction is that we offer recycling of certain products for no cost to our residents, I don't have the ability to take it from the general fund. I don't have the ability at solid waste. I don't have the ability at water pollution control and I don't have the ability at water supply. We do at the other six. So, I believe we do. I would have to be, I stay corrected by Director Milne later on in a future discussion, future workshops relevant to fiscal policy if I'm incorrect there, but I believe that's. Knowing that, the mandate that's on the books for us and has been standing, and we have been before former councils on this issue, relevant to not charging for recyclables, you will see by the end of Director Santos's presentation, has become a tremendous fiscal challenge for us, given the changes in the recyclable market. There is a misperception that things that are called recycled in one circumstance are actually recycled. And there's also a misperception that recyclables go to market. We recover a revenue that offsets the cost of recycling. That is not correct. It has never been correct. And we have always, in my 30 years with Public Works, I ran solid waste two times during those 30 years and then proceeded to other positions that oversaw the operation of solid waste. We have never fully recovered the cost of recycling. We have always had the regulation that states that for certain recyclable products, we will not charge. There is a significant conflict there. We have also discussed this with past councils. A little perspective there, we try to recover the fees to offset the expenses incurred. We have been using reserves. We are beginning to see a depletion of those reserves. Our reserves in solid waste are currently $2.3 million. This year, we will have to use almost a half a million dollars in reserves to offset the total costs, not just associated with recycling, but we've also incurred a significant increase in the cost of disposal of municipal solid waste as well. We don't want to see our residential sticker go up at a rate, especially this year, but at a rate that is something that our residents cannot afford. And so, we try to look at the market. We try to look at what our customer can afford. And then we look at our actual costs and those reserves. Again, we have 2.3 million. We would not want to go below 1 million in that reserve. You can do the math and we have two fiscal years to work this out. There's lots of options. One option is what we're going to present to you tonight. And I would ask Director Santos to do his presentation. And then he and I and PJ Kelleher are here to get into any level of detail that you would like to. And again, Mark Milne and Andy Clyburn are here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sarah Beal is going to put up a slideshow for us. So, for those of you not all that familiar with Zoom, I don't, the way I have it set up is if you go with your cursor in the top right, you can have gallery view when you see everyone and everything, or you can have speaker view. When you have it on speaker view, you can, you'll see the presentation much larger. So, hopefully you can do that and it makes it a little easier to see. So, our transfer station opened, believe it or not, in the 1930s. It's called a dump back then. Some people still call it that. But the transfer station itself was established in 1984 when it became a place where some waste was transferred from that point to other locations. And things were beginning to wind down with actually burying waste on the site. We stopped the landfill practice itself in 1996. And under current manager Els, the landfill was capped with in-house forces at a significant savings to the town of Barnstable in 1997. Currently, we contract with New Bedford Waste Services of New Bedford for our municipal solid waste and our recyclable, primarily recyclable disposal. And that contract started on January 1st, 2015. And it has five years and then it has also periods which we can renew that contract. That's for waste disposal and transportation. So, they pick up the waste and they also pick up recycling at our facility. Disposal costs, as you'll see, have been significantly increasing for both parts of the waste stream since 2015. Next slide, please. As the manager said, transfer station operates as an enterprise fund. Most important being here that it's full cost recovery. It is a residential transfer station, meaning just that. Some commercial enterprises use it for our construction demolition debris, but it's from residential projects in the town of Barnstable. We accept bagged waste, which is municipal solid waste, which is what goes into the compactors, and recyclables drop off. We have a composting operation for leaves and grass. So, we accept leaves and grass from residents. And then we compost that and make it available to residents in the spring at no cost, the sticker holders. We take construction and demolition debris, bulky items. Bulky items are televisions, mattresses, air conditioners, those kind of things that we do charge for. We have begun in the last couple of years of food waste collection operation. And we also operate a swap shop which promotes the reuse of all kinds of materials and products and things that people use, rather than discarding them in the trash when they're through with them. Next slide, please. So, the appropriate governing regulations in Barnstable that we'll be addressing this evening, and I highlighted the more pertinent sections in red, creates a recycling center for disposal of recycled materials, certain of which may be disposed at no charge and others of which may require payments of a nominal fee. And then in 373-3G below, you can see where it breaks out what those recycled materials are that will be free. And those include basic recycling such as paper, glass, tin cans, plastic, waste oil, paint stains, et cetera, at no cost. The other items that we take, as I talked about a moment ago, computers, mattresses, things like that, we do charge a fee for and basically it's cost recovery. What it costs for our vendor to take it plus our cost to do it and that's what we charge. And those fees are reviewed annually and addressed in the annual rate hearing. Next slide, please. So, how many users do we have? So, we have just under 9,000 full cost sticker holders. And you can see in the past 10 years, that's been very, very stable. In 2016, we started a free recycling sticker. And while before that recycling was free, what was happening and what we were realizing is that people were coming in from other towns to dispose of their recyclables here. And it was really not much control over that. And it made sense that we start a program to make sure that we just have Barnstable residents. So, we established a free sticker. So, you just have to get the sticker and then we know when you come through that you're a Barnstable resident. And that's how we operate today. And we have between 3,500 and 4,000 free sticker holders for recycling. Next slide, please. So, how much municipal solid waste and recycling do we generate from those sticker holders every year? And this is in tons of material. And you can see that's fairly stable as well over the last 10 years. We take in about 9,000 tons of municipal solid waste and about 2,700 tons of recyclables per year. Again, that's been pretty steady over the years. Next slide, please. Since 2010, here's the history of the municipal solid waste sticker fee. And you can see that from 2010, it has grown. And 2014 took a very significant increase and then flattened out again. What that was, was our contract, we had a 25-year contract with Covanta, who operates the Waster Energy Facility in Rochester. That contract ended and they had, we had long-term contracts at very attractive rates there. To give you an example, the rate at the time was 37, in 2014, was $37 a ton to dispose of waste. But we were also getting subsidized by the Commonwealth of about $20 a ton. So, our net disposal cost was $17 a ton. Today, it's $94 a ton. So, there is a tremendous increase and that's our major cost in the enterprise fund, in fact. Next slide, please. So, here's the cost of, which I just talked about, disposal and recycling. So, you can see the cost per ton of the municipal solid waste in the green, going up in 2014 pretty heavily and then going up again last year. And you can see recycling, basically the contract that we negotiated with New Bedford Waste was that for the things that we weren't getting a rebate on or that we couldn't sell, like metals primarily and corrugated cardboard, they would take away at no cost to us. So, they took it and they trucked it and we didn't have to pay. And they did that because if they could get some funds for some of those things, they would. And it turned out not to be a good bet for them, frankly. But those costs have gone up astronomically, as you can see here, from zero to just under $120 a ton. And most notably, it's actually more expensive to dispose of recyclables than it is to dispose of trash right now. Next slide, please. This gets at what the manager was talking about is running a deficit. And you can see this is our recycling revenue versus our recycling expenses. And for the last 10 years, consistently, as a matter of operation, there is a deficit in the recycling program that we utilize cash reserves to subsidize and make our budget and make our ends meet. Next slide, please. So, our current tipping fees for recyclables, you can see here, plastics, mixed paper, $115 a ton, corrugated cardboard, $25 a ton, glass, $70 a ton, metals, $110 a ton rebate. So, we make money on metals and we make money on newspaper, clean newspaper. The metals have always done well and Barnstable's actually prided itself on always maximizing the amount that we get out of our metals because we actually spend a lot of time making sure it's clean. It doesn't have plastic in it. It doesn't have cast iron if it's scrap metal. And we began last year when New Bedford Waste wanted to start charging us for recyclables, taking our tin cans and mixing that in with our metal waste. So, the tin cans go in with the scrap metal and we do get a rebate on those items. Next slide, please. And this just, it just shows the trend on each item. Primarily just trying to show you a trend analysis of how each particular item in the waste stream, how the value has moved over the last year and a half or so. Cardboard, you can see the zero is in the middle. So, cardboard, the green line, we used to get a rebate for. It now costs us money to dispose of. Mixed paper, which is on the bottom line, both mixed paper and plastic, they have the same exact line. So, you see that funny yellow line on the bottom. That's basically showing that that went from zero to about $120 a ton now to dispose of. And then the two top lines being the clean newspaper where we get a rebate for. You can see it's trended downward. And for metal and cans, which is our highest value recyclable, also still trending downward. Next slide, please, Sarah. This chart just depicts graphically our recycling deficit since 2010. And you can see that that deficit took a tremendous spike in 2018, as I've just been talking about. And that trend is clearly in the direction of greater deficits. The problem with greater deficits is we have to take more from our reserves to balance the budget. And at some point, those reserves cannot support that any longer. You know, we need to turn to other forms of revenue, primarily in this case, raising the sticker fee. Next slide, please. So, you know, some of these are pretty stark, but it's the reality of the situation. This is moving from now, based on what I was just talking about. If our deficits keep increasing, we keep needing to dig into our cash reserves. You can see that as that runs out, the sticker price has to increase dramatically. And by 2030, it's up over $400 a ton in the next 10 years. This shows on the bottom, projected recycling as it currently exists, free recycling. So, the green line is the sticker fees that would result based on our projections. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see I plugged in a recycling sticker fee. So, a $65 fee for a recycling sticker. And what that does, it still doesn't eliminate the growth of sticker price, but it certainly, to use a term that's been quite used lately, flatten the curve, it drops that down. And if Sarah, you can toggle quickly between this one and the last one. You can see how that, thank you, how that affects, affects the sticker fee. Next slide, please. So, to give you an idea of what recycling costs from private haulers and trash hauling, we did a poll. This is very recent, this week, we wanted to have the most current information. And this is a range, it's kind of a sampling of fees from $10 a week plus $18 a month for once a month recycling collection. That's a total of $736 a year. $11.25 a week at $25 a month is $885 a year. And $1,250 a week, one vendor includes recycling, that total would be $650 a year. And I don't have it there, but I have it here. So, the cost of recycling in the first instance there is $216 a year. And in the second instance, $300 a year. So, even if we charge for our recycling sticker, there would still be a significant savings. Next slide, please. So, what we're recommending at this point, based on our analysis that we've done and discussions we've had, we've been talking about this for a long time, in fact. We propose maintaining source separation. What that means is if you use the facility, you may recall, a couple of years ago, we went to single stream recycling, frankly, because it didn't matter to what New Bedford Waste. They were taken away free and we felt it was easier on our customers. They didn't have to worry about it. And when they started charging, we realized we had to go back to source separation. And what that does, it provides us flexibility in the ability to adjust to markets. So, we can combine things or not, have a better product, increase the money we get for it. So, I think that's something we're going to continue to do. We recommend discontinuing free recycling. Frankly, the reason recycling was free is because for a long time, it was a moneymaker. It was recycling brought in revenue. So, why not? But now recycling costs us money and it has for quite some time now. And it's the days of just being able to dispose of anything for free are gone. So, there's really two ways that could be done. We could have recycling only as we did or with the purchase of a full sticker. In other words, if you want to recycle, you have to buy the full sticker and you get to use the facility fully. Another option is that we charge, as I mentioned a few moments ago, for a recycling only sticker. We're suggesting at this point that be a $65 a year fee. And we calculated that based on the amount of tonnage coming in across the facility and then basically extrapolated that information based on just those 3,000 sticker holders. So, basically $65 a year for the projected number that we think we'd use, it would cover their costs. Sticker costs, that's $65 for FY21. Obviously, we would have to adjust them if necessary every year based on market conditions. And in the previous graphic, it was shown as $65 just going out with those just to show that what a sticker fee for recycling does to the overall sticker fee. And then finally, the biggest thing that we can do to reduce costs in this operation is to reduce waste. And we need to embark on a rigorous education in waste reduction. Basically, it used to be reuse, reduce and recycle. Now, it's pretty much reduce and reuse. Recycling's costly now. So, these are our recommendations. And as the manager said when he began, we'd be happy to participate in a discussion with you and try to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much again. Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, Dan, for the presentation. Just a question, so clarification. So, if I have a recycling sticker currently, what do I do with the rest of my waste? How does that whole process work? I mean, I'm assuming that I'm buying a plastic bag and I've got whatever, a trash bag with me. So, how does that work, Neary?
Well, normally, people who are doing the recycling only have a commercial hauler service their home and they're choosing not to pay that hauler to take their recyclables because it's cheaper to bring them to us for free.
Okay, then a follow-up would be, what is the shortfall that, or lack of a better word, the burn rate that the enterprise account is being reduced year over year in a monetary dollar? What is that? Is it 200,000, is it 300,000?
It varies, but it's hovering in the $500,000 a year range. And I'll let Mark Milne jump in if he wants to provide a more accurate figure that he might have in him.
Good evening, counselors. Yeah, Dan's accurate. We're looking at a FY21 budget right now that will require us to use about a half a million dollars of that reserve.
Uh-oh. I'm sorry, Mark, I lost you.
Well, we can come back to that when he comes back, but that's basically the burn rate.
So, if I may, fee increases on an annual basis, I think, can be problematic and nuisance. Hold on, a nuisance. If, in fact, this is what is occurring, then my thoughts are they're using the facility the whole bit. If my math is in the ballpark here, if you were to charge 50% of the current rate of roughly $250 towards recycling, and I understand the mentality about how good recycling is, I get that. But they still are using the facility. And what I'm hearing is that is still a shortfall at the 65. So, if we were to place a number of around $125 for an annual sticker, that, if my math is right, you've got roughly 3,000 people that use that process. That would bring in somewhere between $350 and $400,000 in revenue. It would certainly tighten that loss gap. And for the balance of the people in the town, it would help to reduce future dramatic increases in cost of disposal there of their refuse. So, my thoughts would be, not to so much take baby steps, but let's just make a decision where we're going to try to minimize that gap and then move forward from there. That would be my thoughts. That would be my thoughts.
Well, I think it's important that maybe you all, you know, think about the reason we're even providing that service now. I mean, understanding that when we started, we were happy to take the material because it was a source of revenue. But now, that's not the case. So, I think it's worthy of discussion, is that, what, kind of what's the goal here?
Thank you.
And, you know, it's interesting, I've had a long history, as I shared earlier, with solid waste and recycling. And, you know, I think for us, we've known that recycling was not full-cost recovery. We have other revenue areas within, we have four major service areas at solid waste. So, and the town council policy was that for certain recyclables, we would not charge. If you show the trends over time with the recycling market, it has fluctuated tremendously. We have had years with metals and cardboard and newspaper, clean newspaper, where we brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars. And now, we're in a position where we bring in some revenue. So, you've got a volatile market. You've got a policy that until 2016 really didn't prove itself out to be inequitable. When I took over as town manager, I had been trying to manage this issue since 200, since 200, oh, I'm sorry, 1999, sorry. And so, you know, we all collectively agreed that it was right to quantify how many people come to the landfill that don't have a sticker that use recycling. And that's what we did. And we've got more than 3,000 people who do it, and they don't pay. Yet, we have fixed costs, yet we have cost for disposal of recyclables, and we have transportation and people. So, it's not just the per-ton rate. I really see no other course of action than to at least consider a change in this policy. And if we're going to continue this program, to have a fee associated with it. And it does, it does conflict, though, with the concept, which is a good concept, to encourage recycling. And I think Dan was right on, right now, recycling, I hope it's being turned into another end product. I think most of it is. Because you saw the gap between if they sell it to us as a recyclable, then they take it to solid waste and get rid of it. Not only do they get the money from us, but they make the difference in throwing the stuff away. Now, they're not supposed to do that, but, you know, the market is what the market is. So, we, this is a serious consideration. We aren't bringing this to you in a panic. We're bringing it to you because we collectively have agreed on our senior management team that it's time to revisit this issue. The other concerning trend is that in the past, we've actually, I think the word volatile is a good example of the recycling market, meaning that it was up and down. And the concern right now is we don't see an end to this downturn in the recycling market. Now, that could occur, but right now, we don't see an end to it. So, it's not as though this gap, and Director Millen, I'm sure can share the statistics over years, but even last year, it was half. It was, you know, the shortage in these revenues was half of what we're facing in '21. So, you know, that is very concerning, not being able to model this and say, all right, we're going to come out of this in two years, so maybe we carry the program as it is because we want to incentivize recycling. But we don't see that. And I don't have, you know, number one, I don't want to dip into the general fund because we're going to be challenged there over the next three years. It also, even in a healthy year, would significantly erode the programs and services that are in the general fund. And this has been voted, that's why I started with the explanation I did, this is a full-cost recovery enterprise fund. So, it's really not one of the authorities that your town manager has. So, we need to revisit this. And I think that offering, you know, a very market-savvy recycling program and embarking on an educational program to our community to reduce, reuse, and then recycle is something that we need to do. And it's, you know, short of that, you see the challenges that we will have.
If I may?
Yes, counselor.
With respect to that, Mark, I think that that is accurate. The current trend doesn't indicate, at least from what I've seen and heard, that there will be a turnaround in terms of the markets purchasing this material going forward in the near future. And the near future meaning in the next three or four years. So, again, we're in a difficult time, we've got to figure out ways to minimize loss and try to break even on some of these accounts. I just, I wholeheartedly would agree with $65, but I think that at a 50% reduction in a sticker fee, that is still a bargain. And as your slides have shown, when you go into the competitive market, we're still a bargain if you combined, if you bought two stickers and put them in one household. So, I just, I don't want to get in a situation where we have to revisit this. It becomes problematic going down the road. And oh, by the way, let's go up, you know, every year with an additional incremental increase. Let's kind of set a bar, I'd love to have it at even, but I don't think that the market would bear that currently. But my opinion would be 50% of the current sticker. And obviously, the rest of the council can determine where that goes from there. Thank you. Thank you for your work. It's a difficult one.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Steinheiner, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to agree with Counselor Neary there. This is a bad business to be in right now, obviously. We've been subsidizing it for years. It worked well when there was no cost to us. But as the numbers bear out, it's really gotten out of control. I think, obviously, and Dan mentioned this, the folks that are recycling for free are obviously not dropping trash at the dump. So, they are using a private hauler. We have an idea what that cost would be if they had to pay their private hauler to get rid of recycles. But right now, they're taking advantage of the fact that it's free here. So, I think if you did have a sticker price with that in mind, that was still cheaper. I mean, certainly, people are going to balk at it because it's been free for so long. But I think if you have a sticker that's coming in still cheaper than it would be for a private hauler, I would at least go, you know, to that level, as Counselor Neary talked about. But I also might consider just going full sticker price. You're not going to lose anybody, but you may still gain people at that 250 rate. It's just a, again, it's a, recycling's a nice idea, but we have some serious financial impacts that are going on. It would be nice to think that everything's being recycled, but I think we all know deep down that it's not, that it's ending up in the same waste stream as the trash is, it's just the way it is. I don't think that's going to turn around anytime soon. Part of the reason that the market is what it is on recycles is because of China, and they're not accepting anything outside of their country. I don't expect them in the next few years to be overly friendly with the number of other nations around the world. It's going to be a tough go, I would think, with China on a number of issues. So, I really don't see this changing, like we said, over the next three, four, five years. So, this is going to be a financial reality that we're going to have to deal with. So, I would certainly support at least going to the 50% rate that Counselor Neary mentioned. But I also would consider just going to full rate, and it's just 250, and that's, the sticker is the sticker.
Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you, President Hubert. So, I don't disagree with much of what has been said previously, but my one concern is just that, you know, it may end up, for some, it may actually be a financial burden. For others, it just gets too frustrating. And I'm worried about people just stopping recycling altogether. I'm also worried about, you know, there was a time when people liked to go into our woods and just dump their stuff there. And I'm worried about that becoming a reality again, too. It's not that I'm offering an alternative here, I just, it's just something that I see as being a byproduct of some of the decisions we may have to make here.
Thank you, counselor. May I ask Director Santos, in the case of the construction demolition and bulky items, do we break even or do we make a little money on that?
We plan to break even, but frequently, we'll make money on the construction demolition because we get more in than we budgeted for. So, we're not, we don't set the price to make money. We set the price to recover our costs, and then we set our budget. But frequently, we'll get more revenue in for that particular item, and that goes in to boost our cash reserves.
Okay, thank you very much. And I just want to make sure that I understand what Counselor Neary and Counselor Steinheiner are suggesting. At the $65, is that half of what it would cost us, we're saying, for the recycling operation? Dan, if you could answer that?
Yeah, I'm not going to say it's half. It's kind of hard to tell. And the reason is, is we're trying to predict how many customers we're going to have once you set a price. So, to think that we're going to have, still sell 3,000 stickers when you go from zero to $65 or some number, that's very hard to predict. You almost have to go through it to see what the impact will be of putting a price on it to really know what's going to happen. But we've looked at, at least with the given number, that that $65 covering the costs of that disposal.
Okay. Thank you. And then, so, it is, even $65 is steep for a lot of people. I'm going to go back to what Counselor Beedenbender said. And I don't know exactly how we adjust that for individuals. I mean, people are bringing the recyclables right now to the town as opposed to paying it to their vendor, the haulers, the private haulers. So, it is a good deal when you look at how much it would cost if you have a vendor doing it. In any event, we cannot continue as a town to subsidize that operation. The good news is, is that there is a lot of pressure in the industry to put a fee, a cost, a responsibility of the final use of a material to both manufacturers and distributors so that in time, we could get more subsidy from the Commonwealth by putting that end of use on many of these materials that are considered recyclables. We have not had the interest, money makes us make changes in our life. So, because we had China and we could throw them poorly sorted recyclables, that's why they abandoned using the United States. But now, because it's costing us money, I think we're going to wake up as a country, reuse more recyclables, but also, we have to have ways of taking the burden off of the municipalities for providing that service. So, I don't think there's any doubt that we have to start charging for the recyclables. And I don't know how we'll come up with the final figure, but I would think that we'd have the general support of the town council that we cannot continue to subsidize the recycling at transfer station. Any other councilors? Counselor Cullum, please.
Yes, thank you. So, I think it's worth a discussion. You know, we pay for recycling with haulers, we drop our recycling for free, what happens to the recycling? I mean, I think we need to think about that, you know, we all feel good about putting it in one of those bins, but the reality of the situation is how much of it, what is the reality of the situation? I guess it's a question more than anything. How much of it is actually repurposed? And how much of it is actually treated as trash and burned anyway? So, I mean, there's a larger conceptual question out there. I think about it, and we absolutely cannot absorb the fees for it anymore. It's astronomical. So, I think that, you know, you'll have, there'll be a good discussion on the council, but I think, I would hope we're all like-minded about providing a little bit of a a little allowance in the budget for, that's not what I mean to say, a little bit, I think we need to revise our whole policy on it and charge us for the sticker, at least, for the $65, at the very least.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cullum. Well said. Vice President Raffin Prisetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dan, for the presentation. I have a question for PJ, as far as the quality of the recyclables that you take in. And before you answer that, just a comment to Counselor Beedenbender, concerned about the cost to people on fixed incomes. I think currently, we do provide a low-income sticker for the transfer station to our residents. And I would doubt that those that come for free to recycle would, I doubt that they would be the ones disposing of those materials in the woods. Just a comment there. But PJ, if you could just speak about the quality of recyclables that do come in, because I see a lot of people throwing trash in those recycle bins.
Yeah, since we switched over to source separation, the recycling has gotten much cleaner than when we were a single stream. Unfortunately, there is still some trash that goes into the bins. It's kind of the nature of the beast. When we did switch to single stream, a lot of misconceptions were out there on what items were recyclable. It kind of turned into a wishful recycling mentality, and it seemed to have carried over to certain items. It has cleaned up a lot since we did switch over, but there is still the unfortunate pieces of trash that do end up in the bins. It's pretty tough up there to keep an eye on every single item that goes into the bins. We do our best, but some does get by.
Does your food waste go into what people can compost? Or what do you do with the food waste that gets recycled?
The food waste shed, that is picked up by Watts Family Farm over in Forestale area. There is a charge for it when it's picked up, but it does eliminate it from the waste stream, and it's much less of a cost than it would be if it was in the trash bins.
I would agree with my fellow councilors, and as a sticker holder to the transfer station, I think the days of us subsidizing those to recycle for free are finally, I think, going to end. I also support the rigorous education of waste reduction. And I think that has to start with our stores, that we allow to do business within the community. You know, the styrofoam, which we can't recycle, that gets thrown away, albeit it doesn't weigh a lot, but it takes up an awful lot of space. So, just an education component to this, I think, is very important. I'm not sure if I would support even putting a $65 fee on someone to recycle only. I think since we're mandated, I believe, by DEP to separate out the recycle, is that correct, PJ? Or this is a mandate from DEP that you're supposed to separate the recyclables out of the waste stream?
Yeah, there are waste bins from mass DEP on items like plastic and paper and all the basic recyclables that we accept, that they're not allowed to go into the trash bins.
Yeah, I would support a one fee to enter our transfer station, to do all that we accept there and not separate it out. So, thank you.
Sorry, I see Paul Neary with his hand up.
Mr. President, you're muted.
Thank you very much. Counselor Neary, did you want to speak? Thank you very much. Councillor Neary, did you want to speak? Thank you.
Just to follow up, I had a inquiry from a constituent. And the, the question was, you know, looking into consolidating refuse, trash and recyclables through multiple towns. I think this has been discussed before, but Dan, can you just touch base on that? And I know if there's no market for our town by creating a larger pile, for lack of a better word, does it, does it create, is there a volume opportunity there in terms of, of generating income?
I, I don't think so. I, I can't imagine how that would work. I know Mark Els, if you don't mind, I know you've looked at this for a long time and maybe you have a better insight into that question.
Yeah, when there's no market for the recyclables, it's tough, but certainly collectively coming together with our, with our fellow municipalities offering this, there, there could be some economies of scale there. And, you know, we, we do that regularly. We're certainly doing it with our glass right now, right? We're taking that over where, to dentists at this point? But that's still $70 a tonne to get rid of, right? Yeah, so, but that's, that's more cost effective and it's a reuse. You know, I think we've got to, we have a little time here. I think if I hear the direction that you're going, it sounds as though I can proceed with preparing a recommendation to modify those regulations that are in place that say we do not charge for recyclables. And, and I, and I, right now, unless you indicate otherwise, that's the direction I'm going to go in. It's my feeling that we need to look at every option. The educational option, I think going to our kids is the best way. That's my opinion. They'll guilt us into doing the right thing. And so, but I think we need that. We need the educational, we need that broad brush, look at the market with our, with our fellow municipalities. I think that people like PJ and his staff do an excellent job in trying to keep the products as clean and knowing the market. And that's huge when we have a volatile market. And it's also huge when we have the opportunity to move into a more positive market. I think we need to have initiatives like President Hebert recommended where he and I go to the state and we try to create new opportunities. And, you know, in, in the policies that are established. And I'm not opposed to going to one rate for all. I would just like to make sure we run a couple of models on that. We understand the fiscal benefits of it. I think Director Santos's suggestion that if we start charging for what was free, any amount, we may see that 3,000 number drop significantly. But on the other hand, they're going to pay for it either throwing it away in their trash or they're going to pay to recycle it, one or the other. And then there's risks as colour, you know, Director Kelleher suggested that you're not supposed to be throwing it in your trash. And if you get caught with large amounts, the state fines you. They certainly do at facilities like, you know, my familiarity with Covantor. I don't have a firsthand familiarity with how New Bedford Waste Process is. But I'm sure they're subject to the same rules. So, yeah, that's my feeling. This is going to have to be, this is going to have between the increases in MSW and the, the recycling market not turning, the, you know, hitting that low and turning and beginning to, you know, go positive for us. I think we've got to try to come up with every alternative here and try to keep this as cost effective as we can for our residents, so.
Madam Vice President, please.
If I could just have you speak to this, Mark. Since we have ceased recycling until at least May 4th, and those that can't store their recyclables in their garage or in their house, are they going to be allowed to dispose of that with their household waste?
I don't know that they have an option. I, I know that Dan and PJ are looking at that and they're trying to come up with options for us. What's happening with metal, Dan, when it comes in? It still goes in the metal pile, right?
Yes.
Yeah. What's happening with newspaper? Not allowed at this point. So we'd be looking for our residents to store this for the next three weeks if possible. It is only three weeks. And we're not into the heat of, you know, our peak season for trash is the same as our peak season for everything else. We have a lot more customers walk in the door after Memorial Day. So, you know, hopefully we will come up with options so that our customers who want to remain customers, because the sticker is going to be due July 1, you know, we'll be able to get rid of both products. But that's, that's a really good question at this point. We, you know, at this point, they would either have to store it or throw it away. And I'm not encouraging throw it away.
Yeah, and I, I just did have a recommendation from a constituent that said, when you resume recycling, it'd be really helpful if people could pull up to a bin and throw away their cardboard or their newspaper rather than driving at an angle, getting out of the car and, and walking down the, the path the way we do now. I know that's an entire programmatic change in the transfer station. And I know that we were looking at making the recycling area a little more streamlined and a little less hazardous for people going in and out of there. Just something to think about in the future.
Yeah, we wouldn't want them with their bags of trash in their lap, though, throwing it out the window. So we're going to have to figure out how to do that one.
Yeah, well, we, you know, we have a design of a new transfer station. And basically, when all these prices started moving upward, we had to put that on the shelf. But if things change in the future, in the markets, in our financial situation, I'd like to see us dust that off and, and improve that facility, just like you're talking about.
Dan, may I ask you, are we getting any subsidy for our recycling from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
No, we're not.
Yeah, we see, I mean, from time to time, we'll get like $15,000 or something, but no, Paul, we're not.
Okay. It's almost like a grant.
Small amounts that are incentive that allow us to print some educational material or maybe, you know, that's about it. They, they are not significant amounts.
Excellent, okay. So I think the reality here is that, again, because of the extreme cost and at a time that we cannot afford it, we are being very much encouraged to take this very, very serious and to really make some, some changes and improvements in how we do all of this. So it is coming together that distributors and manufacturers, recyclers, manufacturing organizations, we're all coming to the table finally because of the tremendous costs that we're talking about. So I am greatly encouraged and I thank you, Mark, for being willing to, you know, we want to create a task force in all of Cape Cod to act as a region to put pressure on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to help improve the use of recycled materials, use it in manufacturing, use it as a resource, make it a commodity that's such high quality that Massachusetts recycled materials would be in high demand throughout the country, if not even internationally. We are Massachusetts, we can do this. So I thank you, Mark, for your leadership in doing this. I think you have the full support of the councillors here in moving forward on this. And we, we have to take action. And so we have to keep working on this. Thank you very much. Any other councillors want to make any more comments right now on this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this wonderful workshop, Mark. Appreciate it. All right. And thank you, Mr. Kelleher, for being with us. And Dan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mark Mill, thank you. Okay, with, with that, we'd like to move to the